We're gonna call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the roll.
Calhoun.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Krappe. McGirti.
Here.
Rick.
Here.
Yor.
Can we have a motion to excuse Mayor Krappe and Commissioner Yor?
Okay, make a motion to excuse Mayor Krappe and Commissioner Yor.
Call the roll.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
McGirti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
So the next item on our agenda is the announcements, acknowledgements, and communications and reports. And I don't see any. Does anyone else have anything? Moving on then to the adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Call the roll, please.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
McGirti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
It is now time for our public participation. Anyone that wishes to make a comment to the or has a question for the commission, please come to the microphone and give your name and your address. And we ask that you adhere to our three-minute roll. Anyone want to come up?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
General McCann's five fifty clinic. The splash pad there by Shady Star. Did that wound up? I mean, who's paying for that? The resident or the city of Mount Clemens?
The water.
Get a water. All right.
Can we answer that?
We usually answered at the next meeting.
I know we usually do, but we've been really answering that one.
He's paying for it.
This is.
I'm Fred Hubner, board member at Macomb Foster Closet, 158 South Main Street. I just wanted to thank the Sheriff's Department and the Mount Clemens Fire Department for coming out on Saturday for our Back to School Fest. We had over 500 people there, over 370 or so children, getting them ready for going back to school with everything that they need. Additionally, we had MedStar there and I want to thank them. They were really just outstanding with the effort that they put in into the community. I've now seen them at several other events besides our own and just really appreciate them also coming out as a nonprofit community-owned ambulance agency. We appreciate them being involved in the community the way that they have. So thank you to all three of them for coming out and supporting us with the kids. They really had a good time climbing and everything. Hopefully it inspired some of them to enter one of those trade careers. Additionally, I just wanted to talk about our, I've talked to Commissioner Calhoun and some other folks already about this, but trash dumping has continued to be a problem on our property. And I just wanted to really, you know, we're a year into owning the building and yet we continue to have an ongoing trash problem dumping on our property. And September 9th or 6th or something like that, one of the gentlemen that we caught was in court again. So I just wanted to hear a few things about that. One is there's no communication from city attorney relative to that case at all. I had to constantly be calling and leaving messages, never followed up on it. Finally, I called the court and they did tell me when his case was happening. Once I called the court, I got communication. But then when I was at the court, it was just a really bad experience. Everything about that entire court thing was a horrible experience. You go in there and I talked to two people. I talked to the prosecuting attorney and I talked to the clerk. No one said, and I said, okay, I'll see you up there, coming up there, physically coming up there. And I get there and they're like, oh, no, your case isn't even live. It's virtual. Okay, great. So I'll try to log on. Oh, we don't have any Wi-Fi. Nothing works in the building. So you can't get any signal there. How many Wi-Fi that you can log into? So I had to go sit in my car in order to log on. And then I kept getting bumped out. So I kept getting dropped out of the case and everything else. It just, it just seems like there's a lack of kind of putting the customer, which is the residents and the taxpayers, first and foremost in their thought processes in the running of that court and communication and everything else from, for anything from logistical standpoint seems like a disaster. At least that's been my experience so far. Even when I was on the case live in the chat, that was a disaster. It was so inappropriate, the conversation that was occurring. It was not a professional place. That was not a, I've never been in a virtual court session. That was as inappropriate as that session was. The conversation that was taking place between defendants before you went live onto, and then having to give out your address, virtual, with all these other clients that are on this virtual call and having to identify who you are and everything else. So that information's all shared with the defendant and it's shared with 20 other people that are on the call. It just is like they're not even thinking anything here. So please consider that and please consider a dumping ordinance that's more strong to stop it. Because right now, the cost of cleaning up exceeds the cost, the cost of compliance, getting a dumpster compliant exceeds the cost of dumping. It's actually cheaper to dump that garbage on my property than it is to go and get a dumpster. And that's why, why wouldn't anybody just drive around and just dump garbage? Because it's cheaper to do that than get caught and pay the fine.
So just so I understand, that court action that you went to was with the?
The one that we caught. He's the only one I caught.
Oh, it's a person that you caught?
It's a business.
Dumping, a business.
He owns a business and he dumped his business trash on our property.
Okay. Thank you.
And it costs us a lot of money to clean it up. A lot more than he'll ever even get fined.
I'm sure.
This is not a loss for him. At the end of the day, it's still cheaper for him to do this than to rent a dumpster that's illegal.
I'm so sorry. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Julian Roper, 155 Cass Avenue. I just wanted to invite everyone, remind the city that this Thursday from 10 to 2 is our Mount Clemens Community Schools Back to School Bash. And we want to just invite the community out from 10 to 2. It'll be fun. Lot of information and resources available. Opportunity for people to enroll as well as receive school supplies, haircuts, you name it. So just wanted to put that on your radar and open our doors for everyone to attend.
Ruby Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. I'd just like to reiterate what he just stated. I'd like to thank the City of Mount Clemens and everybody else that came out to the Back to School Bash at the Macomb YMCA and all the organizations that were a part of it. We will be at the one for the school as well. We gave out backpacks and there was a whole bunch of different things. And it was so successful, we just couldn't believe it. So I'd just like to thank everybody for coming and enjoying. And be sure to get to the Mount Clemens School event as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Okay, moving on then. Administrative response to issues or questions raised during the previous meetings? We have none?
There was one issue that was brought up that was handled privately by the utilities director. So that was taken care of.
Good. Okay. Approval of the minutes. Move to approve the minutes. Call the roll, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
McGirti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to general business. Our first item, approval of special event permit, Pleasant Trees Consumption Event. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the resolution for a temporary marijuana event at Pleasant Trees Cannabis Company on October 24th, 25th, and 26th, 2024.
Mr. Shipman?
RJB Enterprises LLC, doing business as Pleasant Trees Cannabis Company, is requesting approval of a special event permit pursuant to Section 15A of the City's Marijuana Business Ordinance. Although the event is occurring on private property, the ordinance requires City Commission approval of all temporary marijuana events via resolution. Halloween-themed event would take place on October 24th, 25th, and 26th, 2024, from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM each day. The Marijuana Business Ordinance grants representatives of the Macomb County Sheriff's Office the right during the hours of operation to inspect the permitted premises. State approval is also required for the event.
Any questions or comments regarding the event or?
I did have a question on our application. I noticed that we still ask, will the event be served or alcohol in the event be served or sold? Or sold in the event? Should we have something on there? Marijuana be served or sold at the event? I just found that, I mean, I know this is an old application, but this is a whole new territory we're in. And I'm just wondering, is that something we should be asking? I don't know.
What do you think, Rob?
Maybe it's very obvious, but.
Yeah, well, it seems by the title, the consumption event, that we know where it's headed, but there's nothing wrong with amending the application just to confirm that.
There could be other events that they may serve cannabis versus alcohol, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Okay. Thank you.
And they can't serve alcohol, right?
It's my understanding you can't have cannabis.
Just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can't, never, not allowed across the street.
Right. That's what I thought.
Well, any, I gotta go to the clerk. Any cannabis that's gonna be served outside of a licensed facility, you have to get permission from the state as well as locals. There would never be an event where they would have that where it wasn't a consumption event anyways.
Right. Then they apply also from the CRA for the ability to consume cannabis. But why not add that to this application? It's fairly new, of course, for our community to have. It's a big question to ask.
Here's that. Okay.
If we do that, it may be worth clarifying in there. No, you can't do both. Something, just so that it's very clear. And nobody accidentally, nobody has to like send this in, oh, I got it wrong. Resubmit it two weeks later before they can even get the approval.
Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
McGirti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Okay, item B, request to purchase city-owned lots. Can I have a motion, please?
Moved to authorize the sale of vacant city-owned lots of 163 Court Street to 16 North Walnut, parcel number 051112354008 to Charles Thomas for the amount of $500 each and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the documents executing the sale.
Support.
City administration is recommending the sale of 213 Court Street, 216 North Walnut, and parcel number 05-11-12-354-008 to Mr. Charles Thomas for the amount of $500 each. Mr. Thomas resides at 57 Canfield Drive. The city purchased 213 Court Street in 2023 via tax foreclosure, and the residential structure that was on the lot has been demolished. The vacant North Walnut lots are adjacent to one another, have been city-owned for several years. If approved, the city attorney will prepare the appropriate settlement statement and quit plane D.
So my question is for 213 Court Street, how much did we get it for in the foreclosure? And what was the cost of demolishing it?
Brian, do you remember what? I don't remember what we paid off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I apologize. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. I want to say it was around $7,000, $8,000 purchased back taxes. And the demolition, I believe, was around 12. But I can confirm those numbers for you.
Thanks. Okay. Do we traditionally, well, never mind.
I mean, what I can tell you is that not 213 Court, but I believe Brian can correct me if I'm wrong. The other two actually were put up for auction at one time and nobody bid on them years ago.
Correct.
Yeah, the other two are fine.
When they put it up for auction, though, they put it up for what's owed for property tax, right?
No, when the city put it up for auction, it was just, you could bid whatever you wanted.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant the county put it up for auction.
No, we did. And it didn't sell.
Yeah, I think we did that back probably 10 years ago. And we even, at one point, we did hire a commercial real estate firm to market our city-owned lots. And again, that was probably around 10 years ago. There wasn't a whole lot of success. We sold one through that process.
So was this also through a bid? I mean, did it go through a bid process or how did this gentleman came about?
No, we just, we have a form that we use when people come in. We get people coming in quite often asking about, you know, does the city own any lots? A lot of times we have to direct them to the county for their tax foreclosure process. Sometimes they get those two mixed up. They think the tax foreclosure goes to the city. So we developed a form and somebody just fills out and they offer what they would like to offer. If we feel it's too low, then we'll request some additional funds. But the $500 has been typical of what we've been getting for these city-owned lots since we've been doing this for probably 10, 12 years now. Kind of in that $300 to $500 range.
Do we know what their intent is?
They're interested in building houses.
Okay, so the properties are large enough for single homes?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
What is the, do you know what the market rate value of the lot would be?
I'm not sure what the true cash value is right now, no.
Do you know what the taxable value is or the?
It's gonna be a lot more than the $500.
I'm sure it is.
Well, the neighbors hope so.
Any other questions? I can see this is not sitting here.
Curiosity question. Don't, why would we not try to get what was owed for the property, you know, the taxes? If we bought it for $8,000, why are we selling it for 500? I guess is.
Well, the reason we got it for $8,000 is nobody bid.
Right, but we paid that.
We did, but I mean, it didn't sell for the county because nobody wanted to pay that for it. So that's why we were able to purchase it.
And we purchased it because of the house that was there?
Yeah, this is the second one we've done recently where they had a house that's been condemned. It's been a, you know, source of life for the neighbors. So we bought it, tore it down, and then sold it.
How do we? I know 10 years ago, we had a marketing company and that kind of fell flat. What are we doing now? I mean, at this point, we just have the form and just anybody just does the research, finds a lot, and makes us an offer. Are we looking at expanding that process? I suspect land in Mount Clemens is going to steadily become in higher demand. And I wouldn't want to see us missing out on just leaving a whole bunch of money on the table because of how we used to do things?
So there are very, very few of these lots that exist anymore, that these vacant city-owned lots. After these three, there might be a handful, two or three, and some of them are not buildable. So I don't really see an advantage of doing that at this point. If we, if we had a lot of them, then sure, things are different, a lot different than they were 10 years ago. So maybe hiring a real estate firm might make sense, but we just don't have very many anymore.
Yeah, and if they're not buildable, that's different.
You know, we've sold a lot of these city-owned lots since I've been with the city, quite a few.
The fact that he wants to build a new home on it is, we will recoup. But that's a wonderful thing.
Yeah, that happens.
If that actually happens. There's no stipulation or anything, I'm sure in the agreement, though, that says he has to.
Correct.
But.
But don't start paying property taxes on the empty lot instead of us just having it.
I'd be curious to see what the value of the empty lot is after you sell it for $500, but.
Plus maintain it.
Right.
I think we need to make sure that that's.
But it's probably not doing as much good sitting there either, so. Do we? I mean, 500 isn't very low. You know, it's very, very low.
For a buildable lot, yes.
Looks like he offered 100, right? Crossed out. Yeah.
Yeah, 100 crossed out.
I think, I would like to amend my motion then for just the non-buildable lots and table the, table Court Street.
So they're all buildable? The combined lot and the Court Street are both buildable, I think.
Yeah, these are, there's some he said that he has that aren't.
Yeah, there are other, there are a few other city-owned lots that are not buildable that we still own, that those aren't these lots.
All of these are.
Yeah.
So, so this is one buildable lot and two lots that are adjacent to each other, which combined are buildable.
Correct. That is.
In that case, I would like to change my motion to table this until a later date.
And the reason being to look into whether or not we're just giving these away too low or?
Yeah. I would like to see, I would like to see, you know, new houses there and some new taxable value. But I do think we put a lot of money into that lot, into the one on Court Street in particular. And for $500, it just seems a little, a little low.
How long have they been vacant? How long have they, we owned them and do you, do you know, Brian?
Well, the 213 Court we just purchased last year.
Last year.
The two North Walnut parcels, I would say at least 10 years. Probably longer than that.
You're interested in what?
Yeah.
Maybe you can add it to go ahead with the Walnut ones. Is it considered a challenge?
Right.
Whatever.
No, there's no sense.
I don't believe so.
So I'm going to need guidance in this situation. I don't know if everyone agrees that we should table this or?
Well, you have to vote.
Okay, we vote.
You have to have two, you have to have a second.
You have to have a second and then if it fails, then we can decide what we're going to do next.
All right. So he has put it on the table that he wants to rescind or amend the motion.
So I would like to amend my motion to be, let's see here, that we table Court Street. But we go through with the other two.
Approved to sell the Walnut Street projects and table Court.
Is there a second for that?
Well, we should probably, who seconded the motion?
Yeah.
Dempsey.
Oh.
Oh, I guess I did.
So if Commissioner Dempsey agrees to the amendment.
I agree to his amendment.
Okay, so now you have something in front of you to vote on.
Please call the roll.
McGirti.
So is the purpose for this because of the $500 price? Is that the purpose for this?
I changed it because we put quite a bit of money into the slot. And I feel it's selling it for $500 is a significant loss.
Okay, I agree. So your vote is in favor?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Sorry, we done? Did we cover?
Yeah.
Just checking. All right. Item C, Public Access Educational and Governmental Channels Agreement. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the Public Access Educational Governmental Channels Agreement as presented.
Mr. Shipman?
In March of 2024, Mount Clemens Community Schools notified the city they were ending the cable agreement effective June 30th, 2024 due to budgetary constraints. The agreement provided programming for the public, education, and government, also known as PEG cable channels. The programming content was created by the students enrolled in the Macomb Cable Network at the high school. After the cable agreement was ended, the school and the city looked for ways to continue the program to provide an educational opportunity to the students and maintain useful content for the PEG channels. The answer came in the form of a partnership between Hunch Free, Mount Clemens Community Schools, and the city. Hunch Free and the school will be sharing a Hunch Free employee qualified to run the program both from an educational and functional standpoint. The learning platform will mainly be based out of the school as before. A second satellite studio will be installed at Hunch Free headquarters located on 25 North Main Street, Mount Clemens. The studio will allow students the opportunity to learn in a real-world environment. The studio will also be available outside of normal school operating hours. The sharing of the employee is an agreement between the school and Hunch Free. The city will not contribute to the cost of the employee. The city will purchase any necessary equipment from the annual PEG funds received from the cable networks. The equipment purchases cannot exceed the amount of PEG fees collected by the city annually except year one, which may utilize the city's reserve PEG funds not to exceed $50,000. In return, the city will receive the same PEG channel services received under the previous agreement. All equipment purchased shall remain the property of the city. The attached agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I think Greg answered my question. I just wanted to make sure that the $50,000 was the only financial responsibility we have with this.
That's year one, then it'll be not to exceed the PEG fees collected.
Right, just the PEG fees, but nothing with?
No.
Okay. How are PEG fees determined?
I don't, you know, I don't know how. It's a percentage of the, you know, of all the users. So every year it can change depending on the user base. I'm not sure what the percent is.
I put my hand up, I think it's five because the last time I looked at one, it was five.
So it could go up if we had the $30,000.
It's probably going, it's been going down. It's actually been going down about 1% here. You have the other options.
I would not count on PEG fees increasing significantly anytime soon. But I must say that this agreement seems much more clear, specific, and less of kind of like a wavy hands, all parties will just kind of work it out thing like our previous agreement. So I appreciate the clarity of this. Still heartbroken over MCC not being there anymore, but I do appreciate what looks like a clear and successful plan forward.
A couple of things. I had talked to City Manager Shipman prior to this. And after this is all set back up again, our public, our commission meetings will be aired on the public television channel, correct?
Correct.
Which I think for a lot of people, that'll be, had more questions about what happened to our meetings.
Yes.
And plus, we also think we'll get new content as well, correct?
Yeah, I think this was a great program. I think you're going to see them take it and make it better than it was before. That's the intent.
The only thing in the agreement on G2, it says the city and/or the MCCS may increase said compensation. They're talking about the compensation for Hunch Free. We don't, we're not paying Hunch. If we chose to do that, I guess that's why this is in the agreement. But we are not paying Hunch Free anything for this, correct?
We are not.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah. I just, that one section there, I just didn't know if, I mean, clearly we would have to approve it if they did, so. I'm glad that the program can, it's a little bit differently, but it lives on. And it's good for the students. Expand it for the students.
Maybe it was in here, but since we do not have a cable commission, how will the usage of the PEG fees for equipment be determined?
You know, actually, it was, they were just invoices turned in before they go through the cable commission that I know of, unless they did it and went through Patrick because he just turned them in.
The cable commission sometimes would deny or say, you know, be given a this or this kind of choice. Who's going to do that?
That's going to be, my office is going to handle that.
Because you don't have enough on your plate.
This is fairly simple, so I think we can handle it.
Okay.
Well, someone will have to let you know what they need, right? I mean, the city equipment needs.
I'm going to be, we're going to do an initial walkthrough once there's an exact plan in place. And then as each need comes along, it'll be, you know, dressed through my office. It'll get approved and then the purchase will be made. And then there'll be a reimbursement for it, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Can you call the roll, please?
McGarrett.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
You, uh, Calhoun?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes. Um, item E, oh no, I'm sorry, item D, call for a public hearing for the downtown maintenance program. Motion, please?
I move the commission to set Tuesday, September third, twenty twenty-four as a date for the first public hearing for the downtown maintenance program.
Support.
The downtown maintenance program assessment was initiated in nineteen eighty-one at the request of downtown businesses. It is used to pay for sidewalk cleanings, snow removal and other work within the assessment district. Rates for the assessment must be adopted annually. The adoption of the rates requires two public hearings. The administration is recommending the first public hearing for downtown maintenance to be set for Tuesday, September third, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, maybe I'm confused, but have we set the rates yet or the rates will be there?
So next meeting on the third.
The next meeting, we will get the rates.
You'll get the rate and that'll be published and that information will be available in the clerk's office. And then you will vote on the rate and then whatever you vote to approval, set the assessment role for the second public hearing.
Thank you. Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Rick?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes. Now we will move on to purchases and payments.
Move to approve the purchases and payments of invoices as presented.
Support. Any questions about, um, the two that we have? Okay, call the roll, please.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dempsey?
McGarrett?
McGarrett?
Yes.
It's nice to hear McGarrett. McGarrett.
Yes.
Oh, in favor. Might be easier sometimes. Alright, that's.
That's also a yes.
Oh, I see.
That's why I forgot.
Yes. Oh, in favor.
I suppose it, when she said Dempsey.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry. Alright, that's, motion carries.
Okay, that's general business. Moving on to consent agenda, there isn't one, so we will go to the city manager's report.
Kearns Community Center play structure project is scheduled to begin next week. The project will be completed by early October, weather permitting. Reminder, the city offices will be closed on Monday, September second, two thousand twenty-four in observance of Labor Day. Refuge Pickup will run one day behind schedule from September second through the rest of the week. As a reminder, the first city commission meeting in September will be held on Tuesday, September third, two thousand twenty-four. Ca- Canadian National Railroad will be, or will have Harrington Street closed to all traffic between North Grossbeck and Hillsdale Street for approximately two weeks, beginning August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, while they make repairs and upgrades to the rail crossing. Access to the hospital will be maintained. The August sixth primary election went smoothly in Mount Clemens, eighteen point eight-three percent of voters casting their ballot. Thank you to all the election workers who worked long and hard, not only on Election Day, but during the nine days of early voting as well. We couldn't do this without you. Splash pad at Shady Side Park is scheduled to be shut down for the season on Tuesday, September third, two thousand twenty-four. Mount Clemens Parks and Recreation Department is currently working on fall two thousand twenty-four programming. The following programs will be available for registration for fall two thousand twenty-four. We have two Detroit Institute of Art bus trips for age fifty-five and above. We have the American Heart Association Heart Saver First Aid CPR AED courses for those eighteen and above. And two cardio drumming classes for those sixteen and above. And we have beginners kids pickleball class ages ten to fifteen years old. We have a Zumba night class for eighteen and above and drop-in pickleball, which is seven dollars per person, Monday through Thursday, starting September ninth. Our upcoming events, we have the Uptown Friday Night Concert, Friday, August twenty-third from seven PM to nine PM, featuring Spooky Sterling. That'll be on the north stage at the corner of North Walnut and McComb Place. There'll be no concert on Friday, August thirtieth, due to the Labor Day weekend. Next Uptown Friday Night Concert is Friday, September sixth, from seven PM to nine PM, featuring Olivia Van Gourc Quartet. That'll be on the main stage at the corner of North Walnut and McComb Place. And the final concert for the summer, Uptown Friday Night Concert, Friday, September thirteenth, from seven PM to nine PM, featuring Kathleen Murray and the Soul Commission. And that'll be on the main stage, the corner of North Walnut and McComb Place. And Mickey, what happened this summer? It, it's gone.
So weird.
What happened?
They're also on Main Street. The last two aren't on Main Street. They're down by the, by O'Hallorans. Stage is down by O'Hallorans.
Have to take turns.
Mickey?
Didn't believe me.
This was set by Mickey herself, so I wanted to make sure and to check.
I'm sure they'll find it. They'll follow the music. Yep, there you go.
They did last Friday.
Thank you. Okay, this, we're back to public participation. Um, if anyone would like to make a comment, ask a question, please come to the microphone, give us your name, your address, and this time we have a two-minute rule.
Ruthie Stevenson, sixty-nine Bain Street. I've come numerous times about this property on northbound Walnut, I mean, northbound.
Grashit.
Grashit from Clinton River Drive to Kibbie. There's some property in there that is for sale. But my problem isn't with the proper, with the owner or selling the property, it's with those trees that are so tall that are right to the sidewalk. I almost hit some kids, evidently this woman was coming from somewhere and they were going back to the shelter. I almost hit some kids that were running across the street to get away from there because it's like almost dark. Those bushes and trees are coming across the sidewalk. As a property owner, I don't know whether you can get the realtor or somebody, they need to cut those down because that's a dangerous situation. Because people can get dragged in there or whatever. I know a couple of years ago, uh, this guy chased a young lady in there and she was screaming and hollering. People came to her rescue, but we need to do something about that property. And, uh, I'm just not happy with it because when push come to shove, if I come here to tell you, it not only puts the seller in a legal position, it also puts the city for not getting on them to, to do what it is that they're supposed to do. They need to cut those down.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't know if I'm even supposed to talk right now, but I just want to say I stepped out for a second, but I want to, uh, thank you all for, um, your vote tonight on the, the, our new agreement with, um, the city and Hunch Free. We're very excited. Jimmy and I stepped into the hallway, they're just already excited, uh, for our kids and opportunity that, uh, we're gonna turn this partnership into and, and I just want, I also want to say between, uh, the mayor and, and Mr. Shipman, it's been an honor partnering, um, with, with you all and them and we work well together, probably text, more than I text, some district staff. Um, and, and I think that's what it should be and that's what it should look like, so. Uh, I can't wait for you to see what we produce for our students and, and what our kids in this community get and, uh, we're excited about that. And I, and I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge, uh, Commissioner Dempsey for coming out to our, uh, meet the principal night the other night. Didn't get a chance to talk to you, but I really appreciate you showing up and meeting our new secondary principal, Mr. Beal. And, uh, he's looking forward to meeting the rest of you as well, so thank you again and, uh, I'll see you around.
Maybe Thursday. Anyone else? Okay, Commissioner comments. Mr. Rick, you wanna start?
Thank you very much, Mayor Ruppin. First, I would like to just tell all the residents, yes, water rates are gonna go up this year and it'll probably be more than usual. We don't know exactly how much. We had a nice, long discussion about it and lots of information presented. We got a lot of stuff we gotta get ready for this changeover and so we gotta get our investments set up to be able to cover all the infrastructure that needs to happen, so budget accordingly. Um, on a, uh, different issue, uh, the McComb County Elder Justice Alliance will be having a community conversation for Mount Clemens residents to talk about senior isolation and how it is the leading contributing factor to elder abuse. This is a meeting for community members who want to reduce and end elder abuse. I strongly encourage anyone who's interested, uh, to come out. It'll be Tuesday, September third, from one to three at the Mount Clemens Public Library. We'll have community leaders, representatives from the different neighborhoods, as well as, uh, professionals from a wide range of, of fields to think about what elder isolation is like in Mount Clemens specifically and what we as residents can do to improve that situation. Uh, I have some flyers here that I'll be happy to hand out or anybody can come get after the meeting. And then moving on, I'd like to thank our clerk and election staff and everybody who successfully ran an election. Thank you. It cannot be easy. I'd also like to thank all our residents that came out and voted and I would strongly encourage you to go out and vote in November as well. Elections are about more than what's at the top of the ballot. There is stuff, top to bottom, that matters. Please go out and make an informed decision. Uh, I'd like to congratulate the Mount Clemens Ice Arena on its thirty-year anniversary. I unfortunately couldn't make it out, but, uh, glad to see they celebrated it, glad to have them as a, uh, lively member of our community. With that being said, if you would like to be a lively and active member of, of our community, one great way to do that is to serve on our boards and committees where there are several openings still available. For more, for more information, you can check our website. Thank you, Mayor Ruppin.
Thank you, Commissioner Rick. Commissioner Calhoun.
Don't have much after that. One thing I want to say is I want to thank the organizers of McComb County Pride for putting on an event that drew, uh, hundreds of people downtown to support our community and I just want to let everyone know that, um, no matter who you are and no matter who you love, you're welcome and valued in our community and I think it's, it's extremely important, uh, for that to be something that, um, we're invested in as a commission, but I'm also thankful that our community, um, can bring people together, uh, to celebrate that fact. Outside of that, um, just like Commissioner Rick mentioned, um, I'm very, um, very nervous about the water rate increases that we'll have to undertake for this project. We, please know that the commission is trying to be very mindful about the effect that this will have on residents. Um, and we live here too, this will affect us as well. Um, but there's, there are so many factors and so, um, you know, I'm thankful for our team at Plant Moran that is working hard to make sure that, um, we don't have a, uh, that we don't go bankrupt. But we also want to do our part to make sure that families in our community aren't going bankrupt as well, so it's very, it's a very precarious position to be in, but we're just, we're thankful, thankful for the commitment from the city and from all the staff that are helping us out on this project, um, because it's, it's a lot, so. If you have any questions, feel free to, of course, email any of the commissioners, um, and, you know, come, continue coming to meetings. But please know that, yeah, we are working extremely hard on this and not nearly as hard as the city staff and our contractors. Thank you.
Well, I'm just happy to see the victory in town.
I know, that's right.
Looks so nice to see beyond, and it's kind of nice, the picture, uh, um, Commissioner McGarrett was out there filming today or recording, but the picture she had, I thought it was so nice to look straight and there were two American flags just flying right in the background. It just looked so great to see that, so, thank you.
Wonderful. Long time coming.
Yeah.
Commissioner, that's it? Commissioner McGarrett?
Okay, um, Mount Clemens Schools, I'm glad that, um, we're starting to see our superintendent at the meetings on a regular. That is, that just looks so good. That's good representation for the school and I'm very thankful that the team is working with the school because we support Mount Clemens, we support our children, we support our schools and it's coming together and I think that's a good thing. So I'm hat off to you, Mr. Shipman, Madam Mayor and, and all those that's just working to make this happen. Looking forward to the school bash you were mentioning this Thursday from ten to two. Also, I was wondering, I don't know if this is like, um, with the, uh, recreation centers that we have, is there a way we can obtain like a report, um, like every two months or something like, um, the different, cause I noticed you mentioned a few things that's coming up, so could we get a pass report from them like, um, what happened, how many attendees were there and so forth?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, and then, um, I don't know, who is over this sevens committee and who's on that team? But it's really my son and his friends, but, but they did a fantastic job. They did not let the weather stop them taking care of the children. And it was a lot of children that needed backpacks. Ms. Ruthie at the YMCA, to me, it just shows the city, we're really looking out for each other. And so a lot of children were blessed to receive those backpacks as well as teenagers because I guess that's the new thing now. So, um, I'm sure we'll get a personal thank you at some time, but they didn't let the weather stop them. They did not leave. It rained for a few minutes and they just went right back out there and played. No fighting, no police had to come down and the next morning he went down there with his team and they cleaned the park up. So I, I really, really appreciate, that's good training somewhere. So the last thing I wanted to share is what we all are very much aware. Our state representative, who was a city commissioner, Ms. Denise Minzer and Senator, Senator Hertel will be at our Mount Clemens Kearns Community Center, which is at fifty-eight Orchard Street, coming up. It's gonna be the first Friday of the month, which is the sixth, from eleven to one. And so it will be unemployment, DHS, Secretary of State's Mobile Unit, Office of the Attorney General, MyCare Health Center. Even the library book mobile unit will be there, so, as well as McComb Community Action Center. So it will be there, they will be there to help answer questions, to assign you up for free services. This is the opportune time for you to bring your community there. Let them come in and, and see what Mount Clemens and the state can do together to help Mount Clemens. There's also flyers laid on the table for upcoming events, so take advantage of that as well. I'm done.
Good stuff. She always has good stuff. So I, I too want to thank the YMCA for their participation in the backpack program and look forward to Thursday's event. Our kids are going back to school, so we all need to be mindful of that as we go into this because summer is almost over. But that also brings the Anton Art Party is in September. It's on September nineteenth. I hope all of you have your tickets this year already. Uh, the theme is Starry Night. It's our thirty-third annual art party and, um, uh, Mark Hackle is our honorary, honorary chair this year and it's gonna be extra special, it's from six to nine. But our own Greg Shipman has been on the planning committee and steering committee and he's out there making this a extra special event this year. So we're really looking forward to it and I hope to see all of you there and, you know, it is a great event. You bring all kinds of people together. It's, it's, it's everyone in the city. It's from McComb County. It's the elected officials. It's the restaurant owners. There's just such an incredible mix of people and it's so much fun and, and it's always way too short. It's over before you know it, so I hope to see all of you there. And I think everything else on the water, we all knew it was coming. We knew we had to do something with the water rates and it's very, I think, um, Commissioner Rick and, um, Commissioner Calhoun said it very well. We are very aware of how this affects our residents and we are agonizing over it, quite honestly. But at the same time, we have to cover those costs. But at the same time, we have to cover those costs. And um, so we're gonna do it in the best that we can. And again, Plant Moran has been an excellent guide through this, so we will, we will be voting on this at the next meeting on September third, if you have any comments or want to hear this, us talk this through, so keep that in mind. With that, uh, Labor Day is coming up in two weeks. Have a very safe Labor Day weekend. Enjoy the rest of the summer and if the weather keeps up, we've kind of have fall ready. It can stay cool for me, that's for sure. I don't need any more hot weather. But um, have a safe Labor Day weekend and we'll see you on the return. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm in favor.